I'd like to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will ask the clerk to read the meeting policy.
The agenda as printed or amended will be followed, so all necessary and needed action by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion for discrete discussion items only. Business from the floor is welcome and is allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, they must first be recognized by the mayor, second, state your name and address for the record, and third, you will have no more than three minutes to state your comment or concern. How does the agenda or on the back table available to you? Please sign in, please turn all cell phones off.
Thank you. So, welcome. It's Tuesday, July 10th, 2018. This is our regular city council meeting. So, I will entertain a motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda for this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I do have a couple items. Under consent agenda, I would like to move 1.4 to letter I under council items. And under consent agenda, item 1.7, that to council items, letter J. Under consent agenda, 1.5, to delete that as it's had been moved down to council items Under council items, it should be number six and not number five. Intro of new items, I have two items. One is the Now Then Lions request for Night to Unite. And the second is based on the email that we received, Anoka County Chamber article.
You're adding those as?
A and B under seven. The Anoka County, or Anoka Chamber article, the city update.
Any other amendments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think the 1.5 should stay in the consent agenda if we want to leave F in there as how that donation is going to be spent. I mean, it's kind of two separate deals, one's just accepting the donation, the other RCA would be how it's going to be spent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
Councilmember Bettinger, my RCA does accept the donation on it, so on one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I don't think that RCA for how the donation was going to be spent, even by the deadlines were decided, and receive it until this week, so I don't think it should even be on the agenda. But if we want to leave it on the agenda and discuss it, I think it should be discussed separately.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
We didn't receive the resolution from staff until the week of the council meeting. And at the workshop, there was discussion of that item. And I said I would be bringing forward a request on how to spend those funds. And that was agreed upon at the Thursday meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I agree with Councilman Bettinger. There's two RCAs in here that, again, we've set guidelines and rules up for a specific reason, but yet individuals keep not following those. And it's frustrating. We've got two new RCAs, one I just got handed tonight that I had never seen before. You know, but yet we have a rule that the RCAs are supposed to be in prior to the workshop. Why are we not following the rules that we've set for it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
Councilmember Rickert, again, the RCA in regards to the donation from the Ramsey Lions couldn't be in prior to the meeting because I didn't see the donation resolution until we got the packet. So, that's why I brought it up at the Thursday meeting. The RCA for the Night to Unite, we've just determined who's going to be chairing that. And in order to get a request in for waiving of the park fees, it would have to be done now. If you want to pull that, then be my guest and have that pulled. But it's a community event hosted by the Now Then Lions, and they meet once a month, and chairs were not determined yet.
The, some of the, the two questions, or the two RCAs, we do have a provision, if something is time sensitive, which the Lions would be, that Cory and I could approve those to come in under the deadline. The other one, I can see the point of accepting the donation and separating it from the designation. It was discussed at the Thursday workshop, since it just had come out that there was a request to designate those funds as well. If we want to separate it, I don't have a problem with that, but because it did come up, the information only came out just prior to the workshop, and it was discussed at the workshop about we would have an RCA before Tuesday to designate those funds. So, I think that's slightly different than just something showing up out of nowhere. So, the one is time sensitive, the other one was discussed at the workshop. Councilmember Raynor, do you have any problem with the donation being accepted?
No, I will, when we get to the, I will request that the, that the 1.5 stay on the agenda, consent agenda, and I will then amend my motion, or my RCA at the point that we discuss that under council items.
Anything else? Saying and hearing, nothing else. All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
I'll second motion first.
Oh, sorry. We have motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Lieutenant, welcome back.
Yes.
Stay away from the horses.
Yes, again. I made a solemn vow of not riding horses today. Not because I don't like them, but because they don't like me, so. Well, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give an update to the council and citizens for the month of June 2018. Sheriff's deputies responded to 111 calls for service in the city. Few calls of note throughout the month. On the 10th of June, deputies were dispatched to the area of the 6,000 block of 214th Avenue Northwest on suspicious activity complaint. And at that time, the homeowner was reporting seeing a suspicious vehicle that had been parked in the area for some time after the owner started to approach the vehicle, which was described as a tan Chevy, excuse me, a tan or silver Chevy Avalanche. The vehicle quickly left. A short time later, we got another call nearby of a similarly described vehicle with two black males outside of the vehicle talking, and they had pulled into a driveway, and the homeowner was home, but they didn't know it. And the homeowner could hear the males talk about going inside the house and things like that. And at that point, the homeowner's dog barked, and the two males fled, thinking there was somebody there. And the following day, we got another call on the same vehicle. So, the only reason I bring it up is it was very nice that people called on this right away while these things were going on, and we were able to get people in the area. While we didn't find them, at least we, they weren't able to victimize anybody. So, the homeowners did some nice things, some proactive things to help themselves out by making noise and trying to approach these people, and luckily, we didn't have any problems. And there was, other than that vehicle description I gave you, a tan or silver Chevy Avalanche, we have had nothing else to go on, so we don't have any leads to follow or anything like that. And then on the 15th of June, deputies responded to Twin Lakes Park on a report of a male who was trying to start fights there. He was located and identified, ended up giving our deputies a false name. Our deputies thought that he might be under the influence of narcotics or alcohol, and actually because of his actions, they actually called an ambulance to deal with him, just based on what they were seeing, their concern for his health. When the ambulance got there, he actually got combative with the paramedics, and our deputies had to help restrain him. He was ultimately cited and charged with disorderly conduct and giving false information to a police officer. But it was just somebody visiting the park that had too much to drink or too many illegal narcotics on board to be able to properly care for themselves. From time to time in the summer, we see those types of things, unfortunately. And they're not limited to Twin Lakes Park. We get the same types of calls at Lake George County Park, and so, but they do happen, even in small Now Then. And then on the 22nd, some of our deputies responded to a personal injury crash on Highway 47, a clear road. It was a lone vehicle crash. The vehicle left the roadway and rolled over multiple times, and the passenger had some minor injuries. But when our deputies got there, the driver showed signs of impairment and was ultimately arrested after being cleared by a physician at a hospital and charged with the gross misdemeanor crime of criminal vehicular operation for the injuries to the passenger. So, a couple of instances where we see that alcohol and drugs are causing problems in the community. And then I just wanted to follow up with the council and let you know, we're still continuing to see ebbs and flows with our calls for service at Bar None, and we're starting to get concerned about how some of the staff are responding to the incidents. Not that they're certainly not mistreating residents or things that we know of like that, but some of the time, when kids are causing problems up there, some of the things that we're seeing happen when the kids run from the facility, the staff will do nothing to stop them, and then they call us. And we end up, then law enforcement takes on the liability and burden for trying to locate these individuals and bring them back to the facility. And there's times when the facility isn't even wanting to take these kids back. And that's really concerning to us. Today, I actually met with the sheriff, chief deputy, and then the chief of police of St. Francis, just because we all recognize what a draw this is on resources. It's affecting Now Then, it's affecting St. Francis, it's affecting Old Grove, where we're tying up resources to try to deal with this. We've recently had some more meetings with Bar None, and what my concern is, it seems like we get better for a little while, and then we fall right back into some problems. And we're, as an organization, and St. Francis Police is in the same boat, we're looking for some long-term solutions to these problems, not just a short-term fix. And I'm kind of hoping, I don't know the background in the city, I don't know if Bar None is licensed, or has a conditional use permit, or is permitted in somehow by the city to do business here. I don't know that, and I don't know if there's somehow, somebody could let me know, because it's one of the things that, if there is, we may have to do some more work with Bar None to try to get them to take a more active role. Because what's happening right now, they're being, and I'm not trying to make them sound all bad, because it's not, but when they get confronted with a person who's out of control, they basically wait for us to come in and take over, and then take these people and do something else with them. Well, that facility is being paid to house these individuals. And it's a little bit concerning. We don't mind coming and dealing with criminal incidents that are ongoing, and we don't mind, you know, if there's a criminal investigation and charges that we have to try to follow and try to conduct investigations, we're more than happy to do that, like we are for any other place in the city or our county. But it seems like they're, when things get very difficult, they're just kind of stepping back and waiting for us to resolve the issue for the time, and then kind of leave the burden to us and law enforcement. And quite honestly, we don't have any answers for it. That's not really what we're geared for, for those long-term solutions. So, I was hoping that I could maybe learn from the city if there is any type of conditional use permits, or permits, or licensure that is done, so that would be something that we can talk about with Bar None and discuss with them. And then I'd also like to invite, I don't know if the city would be interested, we would like to have some more meetings with Bar None to try to, try to continue to get things to change. I don't know if there's anybody from the city that would like to be part of those. And so, at some point, if the council could let me know if there's interest in that, I would appreciate it. So, at the end of the day, we're just trying to do what's best for everybody involved, and I think we just need to do some tweaking here and try to resolve some of these issues.
Well, I would like to be part of that. You know, we've had some fruitful discussions in the past, and like you say, it gets better. And then, and since our last meeting with the county, down at the county, I thought that was very fruitful, but they've changed staff completely since then, so.
And that's the problem there, even to the point where on some occasions, they've even told our deputies that they're not going to, if we collect somebody who's run from their facility, we're not going to take them back. That was their response to our staff. Well, that's your responsibility, and when you're in charge of taking custody of these children, you're acting as the parent. And we had to have another sit-down talk with Bar None, and their supervisors and administration weren't even on the same page. That was the answer we were getting from a supervisor. So, it gets tough, and we talk, and as long as I've been the liaison to Now Then, which is going on five years, we've been having these discussions every few months about it. And I think we, everybody wants to work together, we just want to find a more permanent resolution, whether it's training, or whether it's what we can do to try to keep the calls for service from gobbling up resources. And that doesn't even mention some of the criminal activity that happens when these kids are out and about. I haven't even really touched on that. So, I just wanted to bring it up to the council, and Mayor, if you'd like, I'll keep you up to date. We're going to have meetings, and I can let you know if you'd like to be a part of it.
I think it would be good for us to find out, because for the longest time, we weren't dealing with it because the charges were going to Old Grove.
Right.
And I wouldn't be surprised if there was a CUP, since everybody thought the property was in Old Grove, that it was with Old Grove. I don't know that, Randy, you may know.
I think they do have a CUP, but it's probably pretty vague, because it's many, many years ago. Maybe what we could check in to, or threaten to do, is, you know, years ago, they used to, alarms going off in houses going off all the time, they actually have their ordinance after somebody calls, you start paying.
And that's actually what the sheriff brought up at our luncheon today, he said, you know, maybe we have to go to direct billing. After X amount of calls, we'll just start billing the facility directly. And my other piece to that is maybe if there is a CUP, or licensure, or permit, maybe there's some ways that the city, even if it's old, I don't know how that, if it comes, it can go back and address what's in place and work to update that. Because if it's 20 years old, it could probably use some tweaking based on some of the issues we're seeing now.
You really can't on a CUP unless they're in violation.
Okay.
As long as they're following the rules that were set out by, what would have been the township back then, then they should be, then they're okay. And back then, I'm sure there wasn't a lot of rules imposed on.
But it's worth looking at it.
Yeah, but they have changed the facility, too, on how many and who they house there. So, it used to be, really, the special needs kids, I think. They actually used to go to school to St. Francis, when I went to school. So, I mean, the facility has changed quite a bit since then.
And now, they actually, they house some juvenile offenders that have some significant criminal history. And it's not just, not just kids that are in need of supervision, or are placed on human services holds, there's kids there for criminal behavior as well, so.
And the last time we met with them, they were going to school in St. Francis still, and that was where the chief in St. Francis is having difficulties, because there was problems at school, they just say, can't do anything.
And that actually brings up another point, is my last point on Bar None. What I learned today in our meeting is that Crossroads School, which is where we send kids from Bar None, they attend school for District 15 at Crossroads, they're actually closing that part of Crossroads, and now the Bar None kids will be getting their schooling portion at the Bar None facility itself. So, one of the other options that we talked about was, in the past, the district, District 15 has paid a portion of a school resource officer to Crossroads. One of the things that we've talked about is, do we start looking at that? If we start seeing an increase in call volume, do we start asking District 15 to start reimbursing the city or sheriff's office for part of a school resource officer's salary or responding to and dealing with the incidents? And these are all, well, preliminary things, but we're kind of trying to think of anything we can do to help alleviate the issue, so. But I will let you know if we set up another meeting, so we can try and bring it.
So, one of the options we have is to, you know, Ellen, obviously, you're pretty busy right now, but the council would approve, I would have Liz look into the CUP, see what we have on record, and then if they're transferring school duties, I know that multiple times we've been up there, it's been mixed genders, single gender, mixed qualifications or designation. So, it's quite possible they aren't even close to the original CUP. But I think if we can have our code enforcement person look into that, that'd be a start. See if there is anything from Now Then, and if so, what is it? And then start there. If they're in violation of that, then we can at least rein them back into what it was when it was originally issued, if it exists. So, I would move that we authorize Planner Stockman to investigate that and report back to the council.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Does the council have any other questions of me regarding Bar None, or anything else?
Are you seeing anything else in, with the warm weather here, especially at Twin Lakes and the parks?
You know, nothing more than, the biggest spotlight was on the one incident I remarked about the gentleman who had narcotics, and, but we're still seeing the late at night young kids going in there, and we've got deputies that end up, you know, probably a couple a month where they're shaving them out of their after-hours, and not involved in any criminal activity, kids parking and doing things that kids do. But other than that, you know, with the exception of we've had the vandalism out there, things like that, nothing crazy. But it depends on how hot it is, and how many people show up, and if people can get along together, is really kind of the recipe for those type of things.
And Lieutenant, when does your transition take place here?
I'll actually be promoted in August. August 18th is the official date. But what I, I just spoke with the chief, with Chief Deputy Gouwitt, and they're going to leave me as the liaison to Now Then, if you guys want to keep me. You might be stuck with me regardless. But, so, if, right now, everything is going to stay the same. I'll just have a, I'll be in a new division, doing a new job there, but my job here with the city will remain the same.
We'll get to call you lieutenant one more time, then.
Well, you can call me what, I'll answer a lot of things, so, I'm not, I'm not that fussy.
That comes with the uniform, right?
Yes, so, no worries on that.
All right. Counsel, anything else? All right, thank you very much. We have four items. We have Debbie Mahatka.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Debbie Mahatka. I live at 7560 Franklin Boulevard, right here in Now Then. I worked here at the City of Now Then under the authority of Cori, my full 12-plus years, as her administrative assistant/deputy clerk. I am sorry to say that the City of Now Then has now lost a very valuable employee, with Cori turning in her resignation. She was a very good boss. She strived to do her very best in all aspects of her position as clerk, treasurer of Now Then. And she did everything from clerk duties to finance, to head or lead election judge. She knew how to do everything here in the city. And we were told in the office by many, many Now Then residents and the regular public, including realtors, appraisers, and septic workers, how nice we were to work with. They said we did not get treated that nice at the county. And I wish I had them all write that down and address it to the council. I wish Cori the best of luck in her new endeavors, and know she will be appreciated a whole lot more than she was here in Now Then. Thanks, Cori, for your dedication to our city. And then I noticed on the agenda, under council items, employment and personal policies, and I put one of these in the book. It's a bit of good advice from a neighboring city, found in the Upper Star News, for you all to read. And I did put one in the book. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Dan Williams.
Hello, I'm Dan Williams, 79, 67, 191st, I live northwest Now Then, Minnesota. I have three things I wanted to touch on. Last, most one here, I was telling you about, the last two years, I've been harassed by Lina Colossus, farmers' market for setting with vendors who have been my friends for over 20 years, and I just, people have been sending this article from the June 20th shopper, people talk about farmers' markets, it's a lax way for citizens, and everybody to get together, and share stories, and bring communities together, and here, we have people who think they own this, that they're trying to privatize the city functions, my tax dollars, and tell me to skid out. First thing I want to talk about, you guys need to tell these people that it is a city function, and the city, I think, is responsible and liable for whatever these people do. My second thing is Cori leaving. I was just wondering if the council has done everything in their power to try to retain her. I always thought she was a fountain of information. I saw numerous times, council members calling her for questions, and very, very, very rarely I ever said, I don't know. I think she was the hub that ran the city, and everybody else was the spokes, and I think Now Then is going to really miss her. I hope that the council, when they find a replacement, they'll put the figures out on what it's actually going to cost the city to get somebody else in here to do her job. I don't think we're going to get a clerk to do it, you're going to have to, because she did administrative duties, clerking, she did everything for the city. She ran this city. And I was told that for under $20,000, that whole And, um, I was told that for under $20,000, that whole wage issue could be solved. And it's gonna cost a lot more than that to get somebody in here to do Cory's bidding. And the third thing is at the workshop, uh, Councilman Mary, um, once again brought my name up. And I wasn't, I shouldn't be a judge because I didn't represent the city of Melbourne. Um, I've been here almost 25 years. Um, I was one of the parents that started T-ball here and it's blossomed into hundreds of people out here on Wednesday night. Uh, I've been, I'm a senior member on Parker Rec. I'm responsible for the, um, it was my idea to have a volleyball down there, use foosball, frisbee golf, to move the dock from the mud down to where it's actually fishable. I was an active member of Lions Club until Mary joined. And in my opinion, opinions sucked the fun out of it for me. I, um, and I've been a judge for you a few years here without incident. Her dislike for me has nothing to do with what I do for volunteer for the city. She doesn't run this city. Um, do you interfere with my volunteering? Uh, she doesn't want me to be a judge, uh, there's no complaints on me. She's defending my character. Um, I think the council needs to have a talk with her and tell her, this is not your platform to talk about what I shouldn't do for the city. If I want to volunteer, volunteer and serve my city, it's my constitutional right. And, uh, I don't need insurance to do anything. That's never come up, I helped with the, uh, ice cream over here, don't mention insurance. But we generally just don't like each other and it's no secret. And I'd like you guys to tell her to keep her distance and Linda Colossus, there's no need for us to even have any contact with each other. Um, if not, we'll have to go, I don't know, legally or something. And she's not gonna come up here and defame my name. I have people coming up, what'd you do, Dan? Why is Mary saying you can't do this? Why are you getting to do that? You know, I have rights here, you know, I haven't done anything. I'm not a bad person, I'm different from her, I wouldn't want to be like her, you know? And some of the people she hangs around with, but that doesn't make me a bad citizen.
Thank you, Dan, that's, that's beyond the three minutes. Thank you. And next we have, uh, James Clemmer, though actually that is a, an agenda item. So typically we don't take open floor for, if it's already on the agenda. Is there something you want to say briefly?
No.
Okay. All right. Planning and zoning. First item is Mr. Harry Udi. We're going to make a motion that, uh, we table this to the August meeting. There has been, I'll make a motion first, table it August.
Second.
Motion second. There have been meetings, uh, Mr. Udi has, uh, still here. Uh, Mr. Udi has, uh, made an offer. The other party is considering that. We have a meeting set up for next Tuesday to try and finalize, uh, this with the, uh, with the planner and the two parties involved, so that we can cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, make sure it's all documented and we can go forward, uh, adhering to our ordinances. And yet, hopefully, in a way that's satisfactory to all parties involved. I think that'll make for best neighbors and it certainly sets best precedent for the city, so. We've had conversations and right now we're hoping to wrap it up next week. Have everything documented for the council for the, um, August meeting. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we have Mr. Clemmer. I don't know if the, we have a presentation at the, at the workshop, we got a letter of explanation. Had some discussion, I don't know if the council members that weren't there were able to watch the video and weigh in on that. There's a request for variance. Uh, there's an option was presented to reduce the size of the building. There was an option, uh, to relocate the building. And there's obviously the option to, uh, deny the variance, uh, as recommended by the planning and zoning. Does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rangel.
I would move that we deny, um, the request for the variance based on information provided to us, um, by our planner.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I wanted to refer back to, um, memo that, um, our planner put in the planning and zoning packet a couple of months ago, talking about variances would be for practical difficulties and that, uh, one reason to, one reason for a practical difficulty is, is it would be something that is not caused by the landowner. I think in this case, we have an issue and it was also recommended, uh, denied at the planning and zoning meeting that, um, this issue was caused by the landowner. And for that case, we shouldn't be approving the variance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benji.
Wasn't this building staked and the site approved before he started? Put in the posts and stuff in?
That was not my understanding.
The footings were inspected? I've seen the information provided by him that the footings were inspected before it was all framed up and for the posts were put in and...
It is my understanding that the, the new, the new spot wasn't approved before anything, any work was begun in the first place. That the, the site that was originally approved is different than where, where it was actually put up.
But before they get a building permit and start construction and putting the footings, normally the site's approved. Before the building permit's issued, so there's...
Something wrong there.
Something ain't right here, yeah, it doesn't all add up. I've gone through the process before myself and normally you're not until the site's approved, you don't get your building permit. And you don't get inspections.
Can I say something? Mr. Mayor.
Well, briefly.
I'm Kate Connor, Ms. White. It was my understanding, you know, Liz came out and told Jim that, you know, we don't need, um, a survey done because we have enough land to build that whole building. So we had to get a survey done. And I think if that would have been mandated to us, we would have done that, we would have had this company. The other thing, like you said, it was okay, um, Andy couldn't do the inspection, so his buddy, what's his name?
Jeff.
Jeff.
He came out twice.
Twice. The first time he failed us because the footings had sand on it or whatnot. Um, we weren't quite ready for him, so we cleaned it up. He came out like two weeks later, um, and approved it. So if they approved the footing, we were, we were good to go. We started building, you know, what, what, what did you guys think? You know, they approved the building and, you know, Liz is the same, you know, it was on our land. We had a big, huge sewer about, and so we had to move it a little bit.
Well, it would require to be 10 feet from the bottom of the stuff there. So that's, when Liz and I originally drew the plan up, it was on a aerial view without the septic. So you couldn't see that where the septic was. So that, that in itself would have helped to have the, the, uh, survey because we moved everything that many more feet west. And that's where the, we lost the land, you know, the, the setback came in shorter on that side. And, uh, like I said, we, we, we thought we were, I didn't even think about that when, you know, we drilled the footings. And then when they approved it, we didn't even, you know, I invited Andy out to inspect it. I invited Andy out to do the final inspection myself. I wasn't trying to hide nothing or I didn't even know it was wrong until Andy came out and inspected my basement because I had a permit for that. And it was finished with that framing, so I decided we'd kill two birds with one stone. And then he noticed the setback, but his earlier inspector didn't notice that the setback when the footings were approved. So we had no idea if there were, to tell people, you know, or moved anything. We just put it where we thought it should go because we didn't have, you know, the, uh, survey to go by.
When was the drain field put in?
Uh, September or October of '17, right? When I, same time, right before we went and sat down with Liz, the planner.
Now, but wasn't the building originally planned to be where the septic is?
Not necessarily, no, the septic was there already when I came to, she didn't know that. And when we drew up the plan, it was on aerial view that didn't count the septic.
Yeah, so, so my understanding was when, when Andy was here and when Liz talked about it, planning and zoning, that the intention, the reason she said she wouldn't require the survey was because you were so far from any lot lines because the building was...
Well, we thought we were, we thought we were far from the lot line, where would I have state to help? Because, uh, the public works guys came out too. And no, no one said nothing where I had a state. They said, it looks good, build it, you know? So we drilled the footings and then we had them inspected and then just went through the process.
What, public works guys came out?
Yeah, three of them, they came out over, you know, I had a string from the road from 183rd and another string. They, they came out and looked at the site and they were like, that's good, that's a good spot. And I'm like, okay, so we just...
But they were out there to approve the driveway?
We hadn't got a driveway in there, that, that's an old...
I mean, public works doesn't, doesn't approve buildings.
No, I know, I know.
They'd only be out there looking at a driveway.
They, there's three public works guys that came on, I don't know if it was for drainage or something or, and wanted to know where I was gonna put the driveway because I have to take one out. So I can only have two accesses, so. So we would close off the accesses with my two portable shelters over there and then make the access to the building from the south most surface.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rangel.
My recollection of what Liz has said is that when you originally came in, looking at where you wanted to place it, based on looking at the lot, a survey wasn't needed because you were far enough away from the property lines. But then, when the building was staked and, um, that it was staked in a different location.
I staked where, going from what she gave me on the aerial view, I tried to get as close to where she wanted it. Like I say, when we drew it up, I couldn't see because of the trees, uh, where the septic was. So when you're drawing, you know, you're going by aerial view, you can't really tell any of the landmarks, you know? So all I did was stake it where, you know, I'm going by her drawing. And it was wrong. I mean, I, the measurements were there and everything, but I couldn't put it back further because I'd be on the mound, so I had to keep it off the mound. So I would have had to, and I should have probably went back and had her, you know, I mean, I don't know, we, we should have went back and got a survey, is what we should have done. And that would have, you know, solved the whole issue. Well, that's, yeah, we just started consuming, it was good to go, we walked.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rangel, Rickert.
I guess, you know, the, the issue that I have is the fact that we, uh, representative of the city who did approve, you know, the footings. And I would have felt the same way if, if, if I had an inspector on me who approved my footings, I'm good to go. You know, so at that point, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna build. And now I got how much expense into that building because of that. In my opinion, at the time of, you know, inspecting those footings, this should have been caught or looked at at least to see exactly where those footings were and if they violated any of the setbacks.
Thank you all, that's exactly what we're thinking.
Yeah, because he came home twice, he failed one, he came out two hours early and they weren't done cleaning up the bottom of the footing holes, you know, because you place some big pads. And then, so they, they failed us and then he came back a second time and then passed it. So with two inspections, you'd think someone would have caught the fact that that setback was wrong. Because once he passed it, then they, they went to town and framed it, you know, got the whole, the whole post up. And, and then, like I said, we had no one had a clue until Andy showed up to do the basement inspection. And then I said, would you take a look because it'll say, give him a trip to, yeah, to the pole shed. And that's when he noticed the setback and then Liz showed up at my door. And I was like, I ran and got my tape measure and I'm like, I have a way, I was, I mean, and then she suggested that we tear it down and I was like, well...
Mr. Rickett.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, again, you know, to expand on what I was saying, I would think this would be a completely different point if we didn't have somebody who was representing the city approve the footings. If that didn't happen, we, this variance, we could, I can see we can deny relatively very easily because of the violations. But being we had somebody as a representative of the city approve those footings, I see it really hard going back on the homeowner to say, hey, sorry, but he shouldn't have done that. You know, especially after all the expense once those footings were approved.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rangel.
My question would be, is it the building official's responsibility to determine setbacks or that the footings are ready to pour? If, if the setback issue is with Liz, all Andy did was go out and, I'm assuming, go out and look at, they are ready to pour. Whether they're in the right spot or not, you know, that I don't know. So I guess I would be willing to, to, uh, rescind my motion and move that we get, um, documentation from our building inspector and the planner as to, from A to Z, what occurred here. I have the letter, um, of explanation from the resident. And in there, I'm reading some things that he made, he moves stuff around. And once he moves things around, then who's liable? So, um, I would move to rescind my motion to deny. And then I would make a motion, um, that we request, um, our building official and our planner to provide to us what occurred there, what was approved, what occurred. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that that structure is according to, located according to plan?
Second. All right, we have a new motion in a second. Do you want them to put it in writing? Do you want them to be here at the meeting to answer the questions?
I would like it in writing, they can also attend the meeting, but it...
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
An issue came up at a couple of road and bridge meetings that, um, was looking for some clarification. I know we talked about it at, uh, the workshop that, um, the council was in agreement that in order to make sure that... order to make sure that all the information is processed, that are prepared and to be presented to the council, that if, if the work or the project requires getting quotes, that that would certainly be something that can be, can be done. And it was mentioned that we just wanted to get clarification and bring it up again tonight just to make sure that the, that all the council members have had a chance to weigh in on the issue, that if we need to get quotes for, for, for projects, that that's something that needs to be done before, to make sure that the council has all the necessary information and so that the recommending bodies and committees can, can thoroughly discuss issues.
The motion is to clarify...
Not necessarily a motion, if that's just kind of what we...
The RCA says to make a motion to clarify, for to continue to do city business, council approval not be required, obtaining quotes as part of gathering data for a project that will eventually need to go before the city council approval expenditure.
If we need to put in a motion, yeah, I can make a motion that in order to continue to do city business, the council approval is not required for obtaining quotes when it's part of gathering data for a project that will eventually need to go before council for approval of the expenditure.
Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second discussion. Councilmember Bettinger.
It already defines the process written or the, the rules and responsibilities of the Northern Road Risk Committee. And if you want to get quotes or something, it should, it should be an RCA saying, "We want to get quotes for this, this, and this," itemize it. We've never received that. Last month, we talked about it, but we never received exact items that, that you're requesting to get quotes for. And that, that should come as an RCA to, I think, to the council.
Well, as also...
To follow the rules and responsibilities that we just had gone through and approved. We should follow this instead of passing something else that's deferred from that. I mean, you guys wanted all these new rules and then we don't want to follow them. We either follow them or throw them out, I don't know.
So, Ray, do you have this?
Yes.
Anybody else have this?
No, it was in the body. It's my fault that it's in the body.
So two council members have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Well, bottom line, regardless if you have that or not, the rules are set up where the committees are advisory committees and cannot direct staff. By asking Joe to go get a quote, they're directing staff. They're not allowed to do that. No one single council member can direct staff. So unless, and those were rules set forth, unless we want to change those rules, which again, I don't have issues with, we all are in agreement in how we, how we want to handle things, but again, it's, it's frustrating from the fact that some follow rules at some times, some we don't, you know, it, we're not all on the same page as who's following what rules and we're making rules and then we don't have to follow them or we do follow them. But again, based on all the rules and responsibilities of all committees, all of them are recommending bodies who cannot direct staff. And neither can any individual company.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Staff was not, neither council nor the committee was directing the, the staff to get comments. If you watched the, the video, the comments were made. "I will get quotes, I will get this project, I will find out how much this costs." And that was from our, from our staff. And I guess it's kind of expected if our staff says he's gonna get quotes, that he's gonna get quotes. And that with, without having been directed by the committee nor council.
So two things. One is, it'd be nice if all the council had the same information at the table. But as we do know, the roles and responsibilities of the committees, committee does exercise no authority over staff, nicely highlighted, and committee has no authority to act on its own to expend city funds or obligate the city in any way. All activities or expenditures require prior approval at the city council. So expenditures due. You're, you're free to talk and eat cookies, but not inside, so.
Pardon?
No talking while we're having the meeting. All right. So my understanding, we're looking for clarification. And I think that there was frustration because I was at both those meetings and they were not directing staff to do it. Staff did volunteer as, as the recorder of that meeting. He says, "I can do that." And so the assumption was, the meeting, and it showed, he was gonna get that information, bring it back to the next meeting. At next meeting, I said, "Where's the information?" He says, "I can't do anything unless council tells me." I don't know where that was decided between the first meeting and the second meeting, but somewhere it was brought to his attention or he recollected it or whatever. And so I think it was a frustration to the, the committee, thinking they're moving ahead with information so they can make a recommendation to the council, and it wasn't there. So the, the request to clarify obviously came up. I, I will say that there certainly seems to be times where staff does take it upon themselves to gather information so that we have items, recommended items to move on. But in this case, if we need to clarify, it's pretty easy to clarify and say, if the committee would like staff to do something in particular, they make a recommendation of the council, that staff be directed to do, to gather information for so we can identify a plan of action with appropriate cause. And that way, they're not authorizing or not directing staff to do anything, they're not authorizing any expenditures, they're simply asking the council to provide that direction. I think it's certainly consistent and that way, it would clarify for all committees that we're not out there collecting data on our own unless the council directs us to do that. So if there's a clarification that's being looked for, how it came about's a little frustrating and, and wasted some, some time, but it would've been nice to, to hear that before that meeting, and I can't do that. That being said, I think we, we clarify that if the committees want to request staff to research something, then request the council to direct them accordingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
And if the, if staff offers up that they will, they will do that research on their own, is that something that is acceptable to the council?
I, I would say no.
No, because they could be reprimanded for it.
Okay, that's...
And they've been, they've done, they've done some of that in the past and they've gotten in trouble, so that's why I guess we have this. And I think if I was an employee, I'd be following this.
Well, Liz doesn't say anything about that. Committee hasn't exercised no authority over staff. He's just saying that in this case, staff volunteered, "I'll go get that information, come back." This doesn't specifically say that, but I agree that if, if staff members said, "I think that'd be a good use of my time," then get permission to do something.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I would guess that Joe was probably under the assumption that that information was gonna be brought forward to the council by an RCA and defined and approved on what he needed to go get quotes for.
Okay, well, it was very clear at the meeting, that's not what he said. "I'll go do that," is what he said, so I can get that, I'm gonna be out doing that, I can get that information, so. But whatever, if we want Joe to gather information on certain roads, information on certain roads and prioritize it or gather data, the committee can ask the council to provide that direction and council can direct staff accordingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, in, in my opinion, I don't see any reason why personally, if, if the Road and Bridge Committee asks Joe, and Joe has time to go and get a bid, he can't go out and get a bid, to better do what they're trying to do. Otherwise, what's the point of having these committees? If they gotta constantly come to us to get permission to get a quote, a bid, or whatever, what's the point of having the committee? You know, what does it hurt if Joe has free time for him to be able to go out to help this committee to get the research that they want and need and get the bids? He's got free time to do it. He, he shouldn't have to get permission from us to go out and get a quote. It's not costing us anything to do, other than what little bit of time Joe, it may take Joe to do. But it's helping that committee do what we're asking them to do. And if we're not allowing them to do that in a timely fashion because they have to make a motion to, to present to us that, to approve Joe to get this quote, and then we, Joe, you know, we're stalling everything. We're, we're getting nowhere. So again, if we're doing that, what's the point of the committee?
It, it sounds like we're playing both sides against the middle here. That was the committee's understanding at the meeting. That was the committee's understanding that, that Joe said, "I can get that done and I'll have it for you." And then somehow we decided that can't be done.
That's not how the current policy's written.
Which current policy?
Which current policy? Not, our, our committees are recommending bodies and cannot direct staff.
They didn't direct staff.
Didn't direct staff.
That's the point. What, what you're asking, Councilmember Rickert, is why couldn't he just do that? If he's got the time, why can't he go out and do the research? That's what they thought, the volunteer, was volunteer.
Because staff has been reprimanded in the past for doing things like that. So what, if I was that staff member...
I, I, we keep hearing these things about this has happened in the past.
Okay, next, next month, I'll bring a ton of examples for you.
So how would we like to proceed on this clarification?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'd say we follow the policy or change it.
Mr. Mayor.
Which, which policy?
Which policy?
The one we were just talking about, the rules and responsibilities of the Northern Road Risk Committee.
Okay, well, they, they didn't violate that policy because they did not direct staff.
That's your understanding of it, but somebody else could have a different perception.
I was there.
Right. I've seen people go to the same meeting, you could have ten people go to the same meeting, and how they perceive what was said and done can complete 180 degrees.
We've got, we've got it on video, so.
Well, again, just because of video, that doesn't mean that everybody interprets what was said or done exactly the same way.
Well, I think it would be clear where, if they said, "We're assigning you to do this," or "We're telling you to do this," or "Requesting you to do this," or, you know, "Go do this for us," would be fairly clear, as opposed to, "I can get that done and have it for the next meeting."
But again, what I'm saying is why not change the policy so that it can state that if the Road and Bridge Committee wants to get a quote for a specific project, they can have Joe do that. Again, what's it costing the city for Joe to go out and get that quote? He's not acting on a quote, they're not acting on a quote, he's going to get a quote. Then they're better educated to find out if that project that they're looking at or suggesting to bring to the council is even worth presenting to the council. So they're doing the legwork which we're, we've always asked them and wanted them to do, but we're not handcuffing them in any way, shape, or form. If we allow them to ask for those simple things, it doesn't hurt anyone.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Bill.
Councilmember Rickert, are you, you'd said if Road and Bridge wants to direct them, so are you limiting this change to just Road and Bridge or is it all committees?
No, any, any, well...
I'm just, okay, is it all committees? And if it is, what are the parameters of them being able to direct somebody to do something? And I would have to see those in writing if we're gonna change it because, as Councilmember Bettinger says, one person's view of directing is different than another person's view of directing. And, I mean, I, I've seen Joe numerous times say, "I can do this, I'll go get it." And it, and it's worked. All of a sudden, this time, it didn't work. But if, I guess if, if, if council wants rules and responsibilities changed, then take the prerogative and make those changes and provide them to council. Or we stay with what is there. And in this case, we would always be two months behind the eight ball based on committee meetings after the council meeting and then another whole rotation. So as long as we understand that if we go by what is currently written, then we are always two months behind. And that's if those other committees meet every month. So this month, Road and Bridge is not meeting. Park and Rec did not meet. So sometimes you're three to four months behind.
So is that clear, Councilmember Ryan?
As am I, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, in this case, the committee, the staff, staff offered to get quotes, so they didn't break the policy. There were no expenditures approved because nothing went to the council. And so I don't see how the roles and responsibilities was violated in this case, for the lack of a better term. If we want to establish that staff needs to be directed to get pricing and other information for the committees to do that, those projects, then I, I, I agree with Councilmember Rickert and Councilmember Ray Bill that yes, you're delaying things, potentially delaying projects because it would take time to get those, another, at least another month to go by. In this case, I would, from what I'm hearing, it sounds that the roles and responsibilities for our committee need to be modified so that we can take advantage of our volunteer committees. So at this time, I'll withdraw my motion and make a second, make another motion, actually two, or at least one.
Can I, before you do that, Councilmember Ryan, I, I think one of the, the issues becomes with committees, I, I think the intention for committees is typically to be long-term in perspective. Ideally, committees aren't coming up with something that's urgent and in a rush basis. Should that happen, I would expect staff to bring it right to council. This road is gonna break down. I don't think we need a committee to, to study it and say, "Yeah, you're right, it's got a big pothole in the middle of it." If there's, if there's a pothole in the middle of a road or somebody's burned their brush in the middle of the road and it's, and it's affected the asphalt, you know, we have funds designated every year in our budget to deal with, you know, gravel road issues and blocked up road issues. And so I would, I would say in a case like that, if it is urgent, that the staff would bring it right to council. This road needs to be repaired, need to address it as soon as possible. Delaying for a week and then putting on next month's agenda really isn't reasonable if somebody's got a problem with, with a road that's urgent. And I think that the value of the committees is, the research, as, as was stated earlier tonight, do the research and present a long-term plan. The road committee is, is looking at five-year plans, looking at overall road study-related plans, as opposed to day-to-day issues. So I think that if it's delayed slightly, it's not a big deal. Because if it's a day-to-day issue, that's really something staff either deals with because it's in their budget and within their responsibility already, or it comes up before council if it's an expenditure that needs that. I think the clarification that needs to be done is, the project that we had a couple of months back is to define what staff can do on their own without council approval. Get that clearly defined, as the lawyer said. So it's clearly documented and there's no question... I don't know that we have, should have, a whole bunch of urgent things if the Parks Advisory Group is really talking about long-range planning. If it's immediate things, I don't expect, you know, the staff to run to the Parks Committee and say, "Can I dump the trash down at Twin Lakes?" Or buy new barrels, or whatever, you know, whatever it is. That's a day-to-day issue. So I think we need to distinguish two things. What's long-term planning and what's a day-to-day and potentially urgent issue? And then separate from those two things, those definitions, is clarify what each staff member is authorized to expend without city council approval. Get that documented so they have it clearly understood in front of them, and then they can be free to do their jobs. It's within budget and they're within the allotted expenditure. So I think long range, if the committees want to investigate something and they need some staff time to do it, you know, and it's not urgent, you go to the council. Council can say, "Joe, do it at your convenience or do it by this time," and they can give direction. I think the more critical thing is making sure Joe knows what he can do and can't do under the guidelines that we're supposed to be establishing. And for the committees, if it's urgent, that staff bring it to the council. The advisory committees are there for long-term planning, not urgent issues. And I think that will also distinguish, you know, if it waits a month, it waits a month because this is really long-term. And the bigger issue here is let's get it determined what the staff can do so that they know what's within their responsibility. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So in this case, to clarify, before advisory committees would obligate the city to expend funds, which would be assigning staff to do things, they may make a request to the council. If it's more urgent than that, then I expect staff to make the request to the council. Advisory committees are long-term. Day-to-day issues are staff responsibility. It's either within their budget and within their spending allocation, or they go to the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
What's the definition of long-term?
The, off the top of my head, you know, we'd have to decide as council what that long-term is. But I would say that long-term would be something that affects budgetary planning. It'd be nice to have the advisory committees saying, "Here's what we're looking at so you can put it in your budget for upcoming years." Long-term would be capital improvement plans, road plans, because if it's within the budget this year and staff has approval to spend this year's budget, we better have thought about it before we put it in the budget. So long-term, to me, would be things that affect upcoming budgets. Now, if there is something that the council determines needs some research and we want a decision this year, then I think council directs the advisory committee to research doesn't look into it, something other than affecting future budgets. So if we see something that, you know, the county comes and says, "We got a bunch of land here we want to consider for your parks and you need to make a decision this year," I think then the council directs the advisory committee to look into that and make recommendations. But otherwise, it should be something that can be planned out there so we can budget for it accordingly. That's my opinion, anyway. Any other discussion on that? So, Councilmember Bryan, do you have what you need?
Um, no, I do not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
The work that the Road and Bridge Committee talked about, there really isn't a line item in the budget for patching or reclaiming. So them are special items. And so then what need council approval, my opinion, and direction on what we want to do?
So why would an advisory committee need to weigh in on those if the road has... Why would you want to send that to committee?
Mr. Mayor, this is not a normal pothole. This is a huge patch. It's going to cost thousands of dollars.
Which one you're talking about?
The Watercrest area is going to, we're talking about reclaiming. That's a project all by itself. Them or not, there's not money in the budget or been budget for them line items. Normal patching, they patch all the time during the potholes. These are not normal potholes that are down here in Will, I think, Will Creek.
Roger Lake.
No. Well, that's one too, but where they burnt the brush down here, on the acres. Them are larger areas. They're not, you're normal, there's a little two-foot round pothole. Yeah, they patched them all the time. They take care of them. This is more, these are like projects and they'll have to be contracted out.
Okay. What do you expect the advisory committee to do about that? That's the problem. They get into, they're saying, "We don't know how much it costs. We don't know who would do it. We don't know anything." And so if it's something that says it's either in the budget this year or it's not, I would expect that to come from staff because what's the advisory committee going to do? Other than what they said is, "Give us a cost on each one so we can prioritize them" and say, "Yeah, this one's going back to gravel. This one, you know, we don't know who burnt the brush, so we don't know who to charge it to. What's within our budget?" They don't have our budget. You know, the advisory committee isn't saying, "Here's how we're going to allocate the budget." That's really for, within the staff, saying, "I know the roads that need to be done and all I can afford to do is these this year." They're going to have to ask him anyway. So why wouldn't you just shortcut it and say, "Here's what we got. Here's what money we have and here's what I recommend doing."
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Again, I didn't say it had to go to committee. I'm just saying it needs to go through a city council because there is not...
Oh, absolutely.
...a line item for in our budget.
Absolutely.
It's not, like, again, it's not your everyday patching. So, and there's never been an RCA or there's no direction given to staff to go do that from the city council. And we need to give them direction?
So the potholes are the patched every day. They don't get direction for that. No, should they?
Right.
And so this is extraordinary. Somebody burned the asphalt, which eventually came around the attention of the advisory committee. I would expect that comes to the council and if we're saying, "How much is it going to cost?" I mean, Joe makes requests every day or quite often during the week. And generally, the question is, "What's it going to cost? Where does it fit in the budget?" And when there's room in his budget and he says, "It's going to cost this much. I need to get an estimate." Gets the estimate, says, "That's within cost and it's within the budget. We approve it." If you want him to come back to council, like I said, I think one of the key things is define what he can do on his own. If he's going to have to relay, you know, a cul-de-sac, overlay cul-de-sac, that's probably going to be beyond what we're going to authorize short of council action. But something's still going to have to happen within his daily responsibilities to say, "Here it is. Here's what it costs to do that." Or, "I need permission to get a quote for that." One of those two questions. I know what it's going to cost. I was talking to so-and-so and it's going to cost this much to do it. Or, "If you want me to spend city time looking for it, let me know." Council says, "Yep, get a quote. It's under so much money, get it done." Within the budget? If it's not in the budget, we got to find money for that.
This is the part we haven't done yet, is what you just mentioned.
What's that?
Tell them to get a support.
Mr. Mayor, the question is, for if it's a short-term project, why can't staff just go right to council to ask to get a quote?
Why can't they just get a quote?
If it's a short-term thing, why, do we need to go have it go through the committee? Do we have, need to have it go through the committee to get it approved that this is something that we really need to have done this year, knowing that it could be delayed two months? That's kind of where we're at. I don't think, in this case, because Joe said, "I'll go ahead and get quotes," that if he needed to get council approval for, then he would have put an RCA in to say, "Hey, here's what I think needs to get done before year-end because it's going to affect snowplowing next winter." If that's what works, if the council is expecting that that happened, then we, then that those projects should bypass the Road and Bridge Committee? I'm all for it because it certainly speeds up the process to get them in and approved and we can get quotes and figure out how to get it done. Because now we're looking at August at least to get approval for those projects. And if that's what we want to do, where we want to continue to have time-sensitive projects go through Road and Bridge, then we can do that or we can find a better way to speed things along. So that's kind of part of what, why this RCA is in tonight to have this discussion. I would say there certainly could be things that staff could just, at least needs to be looked at to go, "This needs to be done. This is part of my responsibilities. I need to get it taken care of in some way, shape, or form." And right now, if we're saying that needs to be to put the RCA in, then they need to do that. If we need to come up with a way around it, then we can work on that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
In my opinion, that on something like that, yeah, I don't think it needs to go to Road and Bridge if Joe, if it's a significant patch. But he should be able to go up and get a bid on his own and then if he has to put in RCA, that's one thing. But depending on, it's in my opinion, depending on the cost of what that patch is, it's up to Joe to look at his budget and know what he has in his budget. And if he deems that it's fixable within that year, within the funds he has in the budget, he can just get that done. That he shouldn't have to come to us to get that approval. He has a set budget assigned by us already. As well, as long as he's within his budget and he's getting done what he needs to get done, that should be the way, in my opinion, how it should work.
And I think that's why we said, according to what the attorney told us, let's define that. Put it in writing so there's no question. Define, it's within this.
I'm just getting rid of the ICHR. It's easier. Which, Mr. Mayor, we've tabled for how many months and have not brought it back and put it on the agenda? So shame on us.
Yeah, it's certainly within prerogative of anybody on the council to get that revived, so. Councilmember Bryan.
I would like to rescind my motion and make a motion that time-sensitive projects deemed by, at least for now until we get our process redefined, that time-sensitive projects can be, time-sensitive projects that may or may not normally go through a committee, staff should be able to bypass that, the committee process, especially for maintenance items on Road and Bridge, and bring those items to council attention without having to use the committee. I think I got that right?
Yeah. I'll second for a brief discussion. I'll second. I think that day-to-day or seasonal issues that arise and come to the attention of city staff should be dealt with by staff. If there's significant expenditures, they need to bring it to council for approval. I think that's a normal way. I don't know how everything started going through committees. The committees are advisory and I think they're for long-term planning, not for day-to-day issues. We've had this discussion over the years over day-to-day issues. Day-to-day issues are the responsibilities of the staff and they shouldn't be bogged down by having to go through an advisory group. So I think that, yes, anything that comes up that needs to be dealt with should be dealt with by staff, working in conjunction with council. So does that clarify what you need to tell the Road and Bridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
In lieu of that, in an effort to speed things along, there were some quotes that, pricing information that Joe wanted to obtain, I would like to authorize staff, whether it be whoever's available, Joe, Ellen, or Cory, to get quotes for the covert on 207th, the top of the covert's below ground six inches, the covert on Pinnaker Street, the top of the covert's 13 inches below ground, three culverts on Iguana that need to be reset, 21-foot by 60-foot on 213th area, which I believe is actually getting taken care of with the Pinnaker project. Getting a quote for Watercrest to look at 811 feet where the snowplows went through, to look at paving and grinding up and taking that part of the road back to gravel, as well as 89-foot by 80-foot cul-de-sac on Bison Street where the, and some, a few other bad spots where the dump truck went through, as well as there needs to be a ditch cleaned on Basalt at 204. I must have typed this wrong. There's a ditch that needs to be cleaned on Basalt where the water's washing out the road.
Yeah. So your motion was to have staff investigate cost?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing or not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Rainville.
I move the consent agenda items.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. The council items that are A, based on conversation at the workshop, the initial RCA was revised, adding in the staff expense for the planner. The numbers associated there were provided by them, by both the attorney and the planner. So what I would move is that the council authorize the following, which is, current planning and zoning commissioners taken past the League of Minnesota City's land use courses and view the webinars listed below within 60 days of passage of this RCA and attend a presentation by the city attorney. Members may be excused from viewing the training by providing documentation stating they have previously completed the four sessions. Then the sessions are listed under land use series, webinars, and meeting attendance. Internal staff will amend the commission/committee application to reflect that all parties under consideration for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission must acknowledge the requirement to complete the same within one month of appointment. City clerk or staff designee will determine a process... City clerk or staff designee will determine a process in which the commission members are provided access to the sessions and a tracking of their completion. The city clerk or their internal staff designees will report back to the mayor and council prior to September 11th as the progress of completion by the commission members, and contact the league regarding any incentives provided by the league for completing the training, completion of the training. City attorney will present to the commission members their roles and responsibilities and legal ramifications of them. Attendance is mandatory for existing commission members, and it's expected that the presentation will occur at the September 25th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Meeting. City council strongly encourages council members and appropriate internal staff to complete the training and attend the September 25th Planning and Zoning Meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Question for councilmember Rainville, for clarification purposes, I just wanted it, I don't know if it needs to be restated or amended, that part of your last line there where council strongly encourage other council members and internal staff to complete the training, does that include, if we haven't hit that maximum fee level that the city would also pay for that training?
To councilmember Bryant.
Councilmember Rainville.
The city will incur a cost from the League of Minnesota for each of the courses under the land-use series, the maximum they would incur is $180 per, so total of $360. So whether staff uses up that first, or council members use it up first, or committee members use it up first, it'll get, I would assume that we will use that, and then everybody is able to take those classes.
I just wanted to make sure that that was included, that we weren't, that either staff or council wouldn't have to wait until we hit that maximum before they can take the classes.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
Point of clarification as well, on the paragraph where it starts with internal staff, we talk about must, planning and zoning commission must acknowledge the requirement to complete the same within one month of appointment. Are we going to stick with that one, one month, or go to the 60 days as we stated in the previous, or in the first paragraph? Because I know originally when you put the RCA and you had asked for completion within a month, but we had changed that to 60 days, I was just curious, do we want to change that section to the 60 days as well?
And I, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And to councilmember Ricker, where is, where are you seeing?
It's page two.
Page two.
Page two, so right after meeting attendance, number two, and the next paragraph starts off with, internal staff will.
Oh, one more, okay.
So the very last sentence there is, basically it ends with, "To complete the same within one month of appointment."
I, I would be willing to change that to 60 days.
I, I would like to, as, as important as I know this is, we're going to be short-staffed here. We've got elections coming up, we've got some transition taking place. I, I would like to put this on hold until we see what's happening with the staff, because I'm having a hard time picturing all of these things happening in the next month. Yeah, I, I think it's important. The other question I had at the workshop is the attorney, the balance in the attorney bucket is unknown yet because we don't know what's happening with the detachment hearings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To your second item first, I did change it, I, I took out from general fund, city towny, city slash town attorney, civil attorney, and I used the funds from the other general government, government, general government professional services, which has a budget of $10,000 and current expenditures of $3305. So I took them out of the attorney one, based on the comments in the workshop.
And, and I think that, also based on some changes going on right now, that fund may be necessary.
All right, I.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'd like to maybe loosen up a little bit, I, and I see that, I think it's very important that they take the, the basics, land use basics, grasping the ground rules, I think that's very important for them to take, but creating the ground rules for developing land and use, land use plans and laws, I think that could be a recommended, like the webinars are, and just, at this point now, just make it mandatory to take the land use basics.
One, one more time again, councilmember Bettinger.
Right now, within 60 days, what this reads is they have to take the land use basics, and also they're creating the ground rules of developing land use plans and laws.
Okay.
And I'd like to see it just 60 days to take the land use basics, so they, they're grasping the ground rules, so they're learning the basics about planning and zoning, and just make number four, creating the ground rules, is, we recommend them to take that to take the webinars.
But according to this, within that 60 days, you have to do all four.
I don't think you should, I think you should only have to do the basics, that's all that's required by the League of Minnesota Cities for insurance purposes and stuff, and I don't, I think they should have to just take the one, and we recommend they take the others. The other thing is, you put too much on these committee members, they're going, they're going to start losing them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
As much as I don't want to rescind my motion in regards to this, because I think it's very important that committee members, staff, and council participate in those, I will let your recommendation pull my motion, and we can readdress this. I would ask, though, in the meantime, as this has been in front of us since, I believe, in May or June, that if other council members have suggestions, that they provide those to me so that I can incorporate those into the RCA that will be coming at a future date. So I rescind my motion.
So, what if, in the interim, we, we recommend to the commission members the same thing, without the tracking requirement at this point, and then when this resurfaces, those that have already done it will have the evidence thereon, and, and those that haven't will be required if they want to stay on. That way, there's a strong recommendation, those people during the summer that have time, or in the fall that might have time, can, can at least get a head start on it, they can take a look at the, the online training and the webinars, and then we'll arrange for the city attorney at a later date, and, and then put the requirements in.
And Mr. Mayor.
Hope it'd be a reasonable compromise, and that way we don't have the tracking issues on the part of the staff.
Mr. Mayor, I will rescind my motion, I will re-present it next month with those changes.
All right. All right, we have Radamacher tree issue. They talked to Mr. Radamacher, and he's asking us to be reasonable, he understands it was their mistake, but if we're going to keep the trees, he'd like some reimbursement, preferably as much as possible, he understands that, that they still owe us at least one tree, and we didn't get the species or the location designated like we had originally agreed on, but we did end up with trees. So the question is, how would the council like to do that? We, at the workshop, we talked about 15 trees at $5,000 was $330-ish.
Three, $330 per tree brings you to $49.50.
So just over $330 per tree. He did admit it was, was their mistake, he wishes he would have been watching closer, but this manufacturer got ahead on there, so. And by the way, the, those of us who are out looking on Thursday for the manhole, it has been discovered, and it is now graded in place. Do we have a motion on?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to refund Radamacher $300 for the one tree dismissed.
I'll second for discussion, I think that's.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Councilmember Bettinger, I'm just, just to clarify, are we saying that we would pay for 14 trees?
He's already, we have the money in escrow, he's already paid us, he's already given us the $5,000, so we'd be refunding him $300 for the one tree that didn't get planted, that's what my motion is. Right?
But he's paid for the trees.
He paid.
We didn't pay for them.
Oh, that's right.
He was supposed to give us $5,000, we picked the trees and the location.
So we had to refund the $4,700.
So he's.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
If councilmember Bettinger would be okay with amending his motion to refund Mr. Radamacher $330, no, $4,670.
Why don't you make it even for $4,500? Because we, they, they aren't where they were located, and they aren't the species, I mean, there is some.
$4,500?
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, so we have a motion to refund $4,500 of the $5,000, and use that other for the final tree that we'll recommend.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, yeah, Dan, second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
I would recommend too, obviously, if, if we have $500 there, we, we use that amount to get as many trees as possible.
And actually, I think the original discussion, when, when this came up last winter, was to use additional park funds to complete, going to the local nursery here, to get additional trees. So I think we, we add that to the park fund to get additional trees, so I think we're going to need some more along that line, so. So, we'll take the 500 along with park funds and get additional trees, as originally was planned. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have scheduled budget meetings. Wednesdays are out. I'm going to guess that Fridays are out. Mondays and Thursdays, the 9th is already a workshop. 26th is Fire Protection Council. So, right now in July, we have the 19th, the 23rd, and August 2nd, in the next three weeks.
August 2nd, I would, we got to tell them.
Okay.
August 31st, I also have scheduled the city hall for whole pad training for the election judges.
Yeah, we, we have a fire board meeting that night anyway, so are you out that whole week, Paul?
Uh, the 30th through the 3rd.
We have a fire board meeting on the 31st. That, that option's out for us. No. No, you'll get, you'll get those, they, it, it's run by the Ramsey groups. Councilmember Bryant.
Just to put it out there, the, the July road and bridge meeting was canceled, so the 17th, if, if it's.
Well, we, we've scheduled a, a meeting with the planner and with the UDs and the Mertz Torches on that evening.
Okay.
How people on the 23rd?
Okay, here.
Councilmember Bettinger?
Yep.
Okay, let's, let's start with the 23rd, and pull you out the whole next week. The election's the 14th, right, Ellen?
Of August, yeah.
We have a workshop on the 9th. That week's probably going to be a tough week getting everything ready for workshop, council meeting, and elections. And the 15th does not work for the city council meeting, so. Hey. Well, here's, here's an option, you know, we can get together in an open meeting and have the discussions, we can record them, and you wouldn't have to be here to type them, because we don't want to get too late into the cycle here.
What thing was that?
That's worth citing. So we have workshop on August 9th, and there's a, the election on August 14th. Ellen is not able to make the 15th, so we have rescheduled our council meeting from the 14th to the 15th to get through the election. Ellen, are you going to be able to do the council meeting on the 13th, or is that going to be too hectic before the election? How about we go the 16th for the council meeting?
Probably can. In the evening, that, that would probably work.
So let's do the council meeting on the 16th. No meeting on the 14th. And Helen's not able to make anything in the week of the 20th of August, or any Wednesdays. So my recommendation is that we get together and, in an open forum, you know, in an open meeting, have our discussions, record what we need to, and pass the information on to Ellen. I don't think, you know, in, in the budget meetings, we don't typically give detailed minutes, so we need to have any specific numbers we decide on, and we'll have the videotape rolling. So that gives us some options that Helen won't be able to make, but we can still have meetings. And that way, we'd have something that. We can do the 6th, the 8th of August. You're back that week, right, Paul?
Yeah.
6th, 8th of August, 13th or 15th of August. Right now, we're good for the 23rd.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The 8th of August, the Park and Rec would have to reach change that, because typically they have it on the 7th, but that's National Night, typically it would have been on the 7th, but that's National Night Out, the 19th night, so they moved it, and the council proved it to move it to the 8th, so if we do choose the 8th, then they'll have to move that.
Judy, can you do the, the 6th? Instead of. Instead of the seventh, they get the sixth, right, right now, we moved it to the eighth, but.
I can, we have to check with the rest of the committee.
You check with that, and then get that information to Ellen, Ellen, can you get it out to the council? And then I think what we do at that point is, we can determine that week by responding back to Ellen.
So you propose the eighth?
Yep.
So we would have a budget the eighth and the workshop the ninth?
Correct. If that works. And depending on what's on the agenda, too, I mean, as I say, it's gonna be pretty hectic around the office with the election. Any other one we ought to schedule at this point? Try and fit something in, well, let's get those two in and then see about what we can do the subsequent weeks. Right now, we're talking to council on the sixteenth, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And Ellen is out the week of the twentieth?
Correct.
Okay. I think it would be smart of us, because schedules get busy, that we pick a night that last week of August, and then we have three on the calendar.
All right. And pick one the week she's gone?
We could, if we want to do the same thing, and they just are. Is the week of the twentieth or the week of the twenty seventh any better for our council?
The twenty seventh, they're heading your Labor Day. Paul, you have sports on particular night or training?
Training's Wednesday nights, or Wednesdays, but I do mornings, so that's. Sports, baseball's done the end of this month, so I got a little reprieve between baseball and hockey, so.
The twenty second?
It's okay.
Correct. All right. Good for now. Councilmember Rainville.
Under council items, letter D, employment personnel policies. I did hand out today the responses that I typed up for Joe and Cory for their questions. So what I would ask that the council allow me to research the questions that were raised by staff, authorize me, if necessary, to contact the attorney if there's any legality questions. I would then clean up the draft and bring it back to the August meeting for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, I have no issues with that. The only question that I have, obviously, is, you know, trying to decipher all of this, and after looking at the comments that were forwarded us from Joe and Cory, too, and looking at what we had, there's multiple copies of this out there, and to try to decipher exactly, can you clearly make sure that we're all under the same understanding where this is the current one that we're following? This is my proposed changes, because again, there's a copy out there that has a lot of black allegedly in it that is different from what we're currently following. So if that is truly the case, then it makes that a little confusing, again, because my understanding, obviously, is in a marked up copy, you know, the revisions are always in a different color. Well, if it's currently not in the existing one, then it shouldn't be black, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rickert, you were provided by Cory the policies that were updated January of sixteen, so you already have those. Again, I took, it's a compilation of this, the old policies prior to this, the working draft that was under consideration by a previous council. Yes, there were many colors in it, but I chose to just leave it as it was. And adding in new things, the newest stuff went in in green. That was the easiest for me to do it, and I was doing it, so I did it the way it was easy for me. If it was confusing to people, I'm sorry, but it was a big document to work through, and that was the easiest way for me to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton.
Yeah, it would have been nice to have a copy that, before you did the edits to it, because there's parts, I think you didn't highlight in green that were edited by somebody, because it mentions PTO and some other areas that were not green. So it's kind of confusing that way, it would have been nice to have, like I said, an edited document. Really, them green, that document's really yours and Dan's comments, really, in reality, so. It's, it made it more confusing to try to follow. And the other thing is, before we had, when we had the meeting last month, I said I would not have my comments in, that would not be at the workshop, but we still want, you guys still want to move forward to have the comments in by this month's workshop. And I have read, too, but I don't have all my comments kind of in writing yet, so. Again, it would have been nice to have the original before it was edited.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Cory has copies of the original, that could have been asked for, and I believe that the initial piece that went out had that working draft in it, and it is what it is. It's a working draft that was back from 2014, I believe it was. There were questions in there, that was the red, the additional things were the green, but that information was provided. And at the May meeting, I originally had asked for comments back by the June meeting, and Councilmember Benton, you said you wouldn't be able to have it by the June meeting, so then we, I amended my motion to have it by the, for discussion at the July meeting, so.
No, I said every year I go on vacation, the week of the fourth, I would not be at the workshop for the July meeting. I would not have my comments ready for you. The policies I have is, I think the one that we're operating on or now that Cory gave us, and your edited copy. I did not receive any other copies. And it would have been nice to see the one that the past council was working on before you did the edits to it. Because I don't, like I said, there's parts in there that you guys have edited that is not highlighted in green, so. I don't know whether, I don't know what's been edited by you and what hasn't, no, it's.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
This was part of the May packet, if you had questions or wanted additional information, it would have been nice to know that at that time. Again, I asked Cory to send out what was there, what we've had as policy, what was previous policy, the working draft. You know, if you want to take a stab at it, you had that right to do that, I took a stab at it, and this is what it is. Paul, my question.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Just the fact of the matter, though, is we shouldn't have to look at two different copies and try to compare them side by side and figure out what may or may not have changed. Plain and simple, and I understand it may be easier for you to do it that way, but that makes it that much harder for us to know exactly what was or may have been in there, what may have changed, what may not have changed. So you're actually, by doing it that way, it may be easier on you, but it makes it harder on us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Again, part of the initial packet was the current administrative policies updated January 2016. So what is current is in there all by itself. This additional one that had the different colors was a working draft that incorporated some of that and the discussions held by a previous council, and then some additions by Councilmember Bryan and I. You know, I guess if you want something, if you want me to present something in a manner that it's easier for you to look at, then maybe you should write that down for me. I took the initiative to do this, and this is my product. You don't have to like it, you don't have to agree with how I did it, but I did it, and this is how I did it, so. I call the question. Call the question.
Mr. Mayor.
I have the question called, those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Question is not called. Councilmember Benton.
Well, the two copies I have, the one that you said that we're operating on now is twenty-five pages. So this is what we're operating on, and you've only added to that, and now we have fifty-some pages. This, half of this thing should be green, then, and it's not. You see what I'm saying, it's either I don't have what you say I have, something isn't right here, and that's what I'm talking about. I don't know what you've added, what you haven't added. I don't know, this is, I don't think this, this is not the document that the past council was trying to update. This is the original one that we're operating on today, so I think there's another document out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Again, under, currently, the city is operating under Section A employment personnel policies updated January of 2016. So that was the last change to that policy. Prior to that, there was a draft copy that was being worked on prior to this, and that is this document right here. The draft copy was never updated, so there's the red and the black, okay? And then myself or Councilmember Bryan came in with the green. I will put it all together, if that makes it easier for you to read, but it's really, again, you've had this since May, and there's been no question forwarded to me from staff that council members had any question on anything. And to wait until tonight to say, I don't understand it, when you've had it since May, is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So it's my understanding that we will have, that basically, the changes are going to be incorporated, that's what you're looking for, is permission to continue on and incorporate the changes into a final draft, as well as to ask our attorney if there were any, to finalize the questions that were asked.
Correct.
To get clarification on, and if that involved asking our attorney, that would be okay to do.
Correct. And I, did I also hear you say, then, you would construct it in such a way so the original was clearly identified, and subsequent changes and/or recommended changes would be clearly identified?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The product that I will be producing will be a compilation of everything. So what you have in front of you now that says draft copy, working draft, November twenty-four, 2014, that will be cleaned up to be all in black print, and that is the document that I will put forward for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
One questioner. And I don't know how much work this is for you, it's just clarification that would make it easier. We have the one we're working on now. Then we have this draft, okay? What makes it difficult for me right now is, okay, now I have what we're working on now, again, which is a much smaller, half-page document. Is there, is there an easy way, and there may not be an easy way for you to do this, to distinguish in that document or that draft what is current, what was added to that draft, and then what you and Dan are now proposing?
That would be a lot of work, what I.
And I understand that.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
That would be a lot of work. I, especially because things are in different places between what is there now and how it's newly structured. I can do my best and have that back to you, and hopefully, that will be sufficient.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, and I apologize that I haven't gotten anything to you, but you got to understand that now I'm looking at multiple documents, again, one that's twice the size of the other, and this, it's gonna take me a ton of time to decipher from where we're at to what the draft has added, to what you've added, and this isn't my full-time job. I have other responsibilities that I got to focus on to pay my bills over this. So for me to have to spend the amount of time that I need to, to clearly go through all those documents and decipher exactly what was added from, or taken from the original, put in the draft, what was changed in the draft, and then now added again, is gonna take me a lot of time, and I understand what I'm asking of you to do will take you a lot of time, but it would save me and others a ton of time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rickert, I will attempt that, I cannot promise that it'll be exactly how you want it, but by reading the existing, you see what is there, and then you read the new, the draft copy, you should be able to see what is in there that came forward. Most things did come forward, most of what the changes are, are clarifications, things in more detail. And it was just, it was taken from League of Minnesota City's documentation that they recommend that be in policies.
Actually, it was presented by Cory, she went and researched it with the league and presented that draft in 2014. She's the one that presented that and recommended those, we just, obviously, some of them didn't get finalized before council transitions. Right, so at this time, our motion is to.
The motion is to, that I will research the questions raised by staff, and if needed, ask the council to authorize. ask the council to authorize contact with the attorney if there's any legal type questions, that I would clean up the draft and bring it back to the August meeting for approval.
All right.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilmember Raynor.
Joe, I didn't know if you were going to be at the meeting tonight. I have your responses here if you want. I can bring you two.
I have a meeting, training plan, job descriptions. I make a motion to table those in, in light of further discussion that would likely be coming up on these items.
Second that.
Motion to second discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries. Item F.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
Based on conversations at the workshop, I submitted this RCA in regards to the $10,000 donation from the Ramsey Lions. I will amend it that under the request for council action, I would delete the, accept the Ramsey Lion donation, Ramsey Lions donation, as that's already been done, and then renumber going down. If we have a second, I can...
I'll second for discussion.
Motion to second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I bring forward this motion to use the $10,000 donation from Ramsey Lions plus $831.34 that the mayor has donated from the previous mayor's snowmobile ride, that those monies be deposited into the capital improvement fund and that we dedicate that money to providing improvements at City Hall, that the council directs, Councilmember Bryan and Raynor, using input from staff and council, to develop a list of needs such as wall or floor repair, painting, lavatory updates, drapery, furniture enhancements. Input is requested to be provided to the city clerk by July 24th for dissemination of the coun, to council members Bryan and Raynor. Directs, council directs City, Councilmembers Bryan and Raynor to obtain associated costs for each improvement and directs Councilmembers Bryan and Raynor to present to the city council the bids and their scope of work for a final decision. Unless completed earlier than this, it is, unless completed earlier, this is expected to occur at the October council meetings.
Councilmember Raynor.
We've had previous discussions on...
Mr. Mayor, do we have a second?
Yes.
Sorry, I had a minute.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we've had previously, we've had previous discussions as a council as to do some, make some modifications to the structure. It's been a long time, other than the floor and the furnace, it's been a long time since anything, anything's been done to this room or the hallways or the lavatories. And I think this is a good opportunity to use those funds to try to make some building improvements.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I guess I have no, no issues with us getting an idea of what some improvements may cost. Again, I've, I've made the comment before, you look at the walls and, you know, underneath the windows and whatnot. I honest, honestly believe when you start digging in, into these walls, you may well exceed that dollar. So I guess my only question, do we have to earmark these funds specifically right now for this? Can we put them in the general fund and, you know, have, you know, that's our plan, but let you guys go out and get bids for this and then come back and find out, okay, we, the funds are there, we have it, or holy cow, you know, this is going to cost way more than, I would, I'd rather not earmark those funds until we specifically know that's what we're going to use them for.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I prefer that they be earmarked. I don't want to see them get lost in the general budget. We have 10,000, well, we have eight, $10,831.34. Can't spend anymore, we're not authorized to spend anymore. So however the bids come back for whatever the items are, council then can prioritize those. But we won't come in, or don't plan to come in with, you know, asking to spend $35,000 when I'm only looking at $10,831.
Just clarification, when we, when we set the budget last year with the capital improvement for buildings, part of that, we'd added about $10,000 in there for this building. So of that $40,000, we, we anticipated a certain percentage of that to be for improvements in this building.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
And I, and I believe that's where this money should be put, is in the capital improvement plan and then however we decide to spend it in the future. If the council decides, it's fine, whatever. I'd rather see it being spent. We've asked our fire chief to work on an estimate for a bill in addition for the fire department, which is a safety issue. We get, they got their turnout here, their meeting room and everything, so I didn't worry exhaust from all the vehicles and stuff is. I think to, to me, that's a higher priority than spending a bunch of money on improvements for the city hall. This, this place works just fine.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
Again, I took the initiative to put forward this RCA. If a council member chooses not to support it, you don't have to support it, but I'm asking that we dedicate those funds to making some improvements in this room. It's the room that our residents use, it's our meeting room. I think it's important that, that we make some modifications. Again, if you don't want to support it, you don't have to vote for it. But...
All right. Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G. I make a motion that we accept the clerk treasurer's resignation as presented last week to have her final day be July 20th. I would like to thank her for 16 years of service.
A second first.
Wish her well in the part of the motion and thanking her and wishing her well in her future endeavors.
Second that.
Motion to second. Discussion. Councilmember Rickert.
You know, we got, we received an email from Corey, what, over the, just after the I would actually rather us, if we could, not accept that resignation and try to sit down and have a conversation with her and find out what it would take to possibly, to get her to stay or if she's willing to stay. I think she's a very valuable asset, she has a lot to offer the city. And I don't think anybody here is even fathing the amount of money it's going to end up costing us if we don't make any efforts to try to keep her around.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I also make a motion in light of this to have the mayor and Councilmember Bryan work with Ellen to hire some short-term temporary office clerical help, potentially two to three months to help out since there are a lot of things going on with the elections going on here and identifying what needs to be done at the office. And to have Councilmember Bryan and the mayor review and authorize, if acceptable, short-term contract that's been drafted by our attorney and Corey to contract with Corey for additional services that she will specify to assist with the transition here, especially the elections. Thirdly, to research and retain interim administrative help to cover the clerk treasurer responsibilities while the council searches for full-time replacement. And then fourth, to, I will call a special session, or special meeting to determine how the search will be conducted, define the duties and expectations and the process for selecting a replacement.
Second that.
I do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Nothing else, Councilman Bryan, but I just think it odd that, you know, through all the hiring processes and whatnot we've done for staff and it's been you and I, so I'm surprised that it wouldn't continue that being we both have the most vast knowledge of what's, the inner workings of the staff in the office.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I will gladly help in that search. It's good to spread the knowledge around so that everybody can learn the different aspects of what's going on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Has there been conversations going on already with city attorney? If so, wasn't the council supposed to be receiving emails and conversations just notification of what's kind of going on and behind the scenes? Wasn't that part of the, the mayor contacting the city, if I remember right, to, they're supposed to...
Actually, Bob, Bob contacted Corey. Bob suggested that there be a contract in, in light of the elections coming up. That was his, you know, he expressed concern on that, so he actually, Corey actually forwarded what they've worked on just before I got here tonight, a copy from work, but they've actually been the ones working on this. Other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Item H is an RCA that showed up tonight. I haven't had a chance to read it yet. And in light of the previous motion, we are looking at some interim possibilities. I would like to, I would make a motion to table this until we can read it and then if it is appropriate, I would expect that we will make compensation accordingly. And motion to second, discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. On point four, I believe Mary, Councilmember Raynor pulled that one.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2018-23, appointing election judges. I would request that council remove the name of Dan Williams as a potential judge in the primary election.
Second. Motion to second, discussion.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I bring this forward based on a documented history of inappropriate behaviors portrayed by Mr. Williams at council and committee meetings. He is crude in his remarks, untruthful, demeaning to those and demeaning to those who he addresses. All a resident needs to do is read the February 18, May, June and July 16 council and committee meeting minutes to understand that these behaviors are not ones which reflect positively on the city. And as I've stated before, as an observer and a participant in committee and council meetings over the years, I found Mr. Williams to be argumentative, disrespectful, and as such does not portray a positive reflection of the city. His publicly stated information that's untruthful, disrespectful, his comments in regards to yeast infection leading a whore to bed, and his demeaning to other park and rec committee members inferring that, that they don't spend as much time in the park as he does, so they aren't representing the residents. But I guess, I, again, I just don't think that he is a positive, reflects positively on our city. He has done a lot, has been here a long time, but I believe that his behaviors supersede any of that.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think Dan's been a member of this committee for a long time as well, but like a lot of people. He's trained, he's done this in the past, there's never been any complaints about him being an election judge in the past, so he's qualified. There's no reason why we would not keep him on the list. Just because somebody has a difference of, of opinion of you and you don't care for each other, there's no need to make it personal for everything and how that he should state.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
And Councilmember Bettinger, I'm not making this personal. I'm looking at behaviors by an individual and I don't believe that those behaviors reflect positively on our city. And it's, I believe, our responsibility that if we appoint somebody, that they reflect positively on our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, there, there's people out there who could probably make the same argument to Councilman Raynor that they don't think that you positively represent the city. That's our personal opinion. Everybody's entitled to one. And again, if, if he's a qualified person, regardless of what you say, I believe it is personal. I, I, I've been involved in committees with Dan in the past and I think Dan has come up with some great ideas that we've actually implemented in the city that a lot of residents use. And again, it's, it comes, has Dan made comments in the past that he shouldn't have? Probably. Have you? Probably. Have I? Probably. But again, it's, in my opinion, what you said about Dan here tonight, somebody could say the exact same thing about you, about speaking non-truce at times and whatnot. And again, to me, it's a, it's a personal attack and it, and it shouldn't be allowed to exist.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I, again, I'm looking at behaviors that are not reflected, reflecting positively on our city. If you're okay with somebody that makes the comments that he does in public, then you can be comfortable with that. I am not. And for people that you, you say people don't like me, that's fine, then they don't have to vote for me, okay? And when, when I'm up for election in three years, they don't have to vote for me. In the meantime, we have a person who is disrespectful, he's untruthful, he's demeaning.
In your opinion?
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
So, so... So, so, councilmember Rainville.
No, Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, the things that I have spoken on with him being untruthful, I have documented those, Paul, and if you don't remember them or choose not to remember them, that's fine, but he stood and mis, he misspoke on things, and I clarified that. I am not going to, as much as you want me to, I am not going to let somebody stand up there and lie about me, and if you say I'm lying, then I'd like that was all, those instances all written down, because again, like you have many other times, oh, I have a list, I have this, I have that, but never any proof of that, I have proof of the times, and you were here and listened to them, that's not appropriate behavior, and if you feel that is, well, that's, that's your right, but I don't believe that's appropriate behavior, and it reflects poorly on our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I have a question for councilwoman Rainville, have you ever, at recycling day, when, either with Mr. Williams or another employee of the city of Northern, when they have spoken to you at recycling day, shook your head and rolled your eyes when they speak, and is that publicly okay?
Are you saying I did that?
Oh, yes, I've seen you do it many times.
Okay.
When Joe and Dan have spoken, spoke about something, so you're just like, like Paul said, it is personal, whether you wanted to do it or not.
These are not, these are behaviors that are wrong.
That's not acceptable behavior either, as a leader of this community.
I'll try not to do that again, councilmember Bettinger.
So, it is personal.
No, it is not.
And as election judge, he's always done a fine job, I, I asked Cory about it today, if they, has there ever been any complaints on, on his work? No, he does a great job.
And Cory should stand up here and say that then, but in the meantime, I'm asking that his name be removed.
Can I say something?
No.
No, sir.
Say pardon.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian. She lied, said that I wasn't sure.
That there have been issues with, with paperwork in the past, that so, that it's been requested, and Cory has said that there were issues with paperwork, so there are other issues involved as well, and the election judge. Maybe it'll be different this year with the iPads, but I don't know.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Point seven.
One point seven is the request from Lake Side Cabinets to, for the use of golf carts and temporary road closure, I, I know that he updated this, corrected the date on it and, and updated, but it's still not clear as to what is being closed, so I'm wondering if we can't bring this back to him and ask for a map of, because when I, when I draw a map, when I printed out a map and I write down what he says, it looks like he's closing 199th all the way to Iguana, well, that interrupts the parking for the festival coming in on 199th, and there's still the question of, are these carts going in, how, how far are these golf carts going on Iguana, both to the south and the east? And it's, there, there's still time to come back in August with the clarification.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
This RCA is no different than the RCA that we approved last year, so I don't understand why, if we approved it last year, it's an issue this year. And I have my personal opinion, but I'll keep that to myself.
My understanding was that the road closure last year, and I don't know if this is the exact same submittal, just with different dates, and maybe you know, councilmember Rickert, it was from 199th and Iguana north to 201st. Do you know that?
I believe so, but I'm.
And that they were actually keeping half the road open so people could get into the storage units.
Correct.
And people on that side of the road, so I think they parked on one side of the road, and the, the golf carts, I don't know if they go up Iguana to the restaurants or not, do you know that at all?
I'm not sure, I know.
I know the golf carts come back and forth to the Heritage Festival, but I don't know if they were, I guess, that wouldn't be clear to me, is he, is he looking for golf carts just across 199th or up Iguana?
My understanding was the primary use of the golf carts was to commute people between Heritage Festival and the car show.
Mr. Mayor.
Helen, yes.
I actually asked Tony when he resubmitted this, told him about, what, asking about the half of the road closure, and he said that they did not do that last time because it actually encourages people to go down there and turn around, they just block the whole thing off, and then the businesses can access from the north. Pretty sure that's it.
Well, that, so, I thought the roads would close all the way to the north.
No, it says here that their, their access is, they're second to the bottom line, there's access for all the businesses from the north on 199th.
Help me out, councilmember Rickert, do you know how far up Iguana he goes?
I am not 100% positive, but I, I know he said last, last year he set it up so that they, you know, he could get into all the businesses off of, from the north side. He just couldn't go through from the south.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To councilmember Rickert, what was your last?
He just couldn't get through from the south, he could access all those businesses from the north side.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Again, he's got in here the use of golf carts to help commute people from other businesses and community events, so, again, is he taking these golf carts into the, the businesses south of 199th on Iguana? I just think that needs to be.
I don't, I don't think we know, so how about?
Yeah, it needs to be spelled out.
How about I go ask him? Do you authorize me to go ask him and clean it up, so that we just don't have any more questions? I think the understanding is we want him to be able to have the car show, we just want to understand what he's closing, and how businesses have access, and where the golf carts are going. Does anybody have any other question beside that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I guess the only question is then, are we authorizing you to, are we approving the RCA based on satisfaction of your, his answers to your questions?
I would move that accordingly. I make that motion, I'm waiting for a second. There's a motion and a second, other discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, uh, Brian.
So, yeah, so we're pretty sure that that's what his meaning is to close from, close that north end of Iguana where you would just have access from the north, and that you would basically clarify that with, clarify that and then get an email to Cory or Ellen, and then we can just get an update of here's what's included?
Yeah, or we can, we can certainly bring it back in August for an update, yeah, this isn't until the end of September, so, I think the, the, the question I'll have is clarify 199th Iguana to the end of Iguana, business access, and where the golf carts are going.
Yeah, I, I just can't, I was looking for the letter, but I can't find it, but yeah, I guess it, we, we need that, just to clarify it in the motion, yes. For approval.
All right, any other, so? All right, any, seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Under new items, I provided RCA, the Northern Lions is, are requesting the waiving of $53.44 rental fee for the Northern Memorial Park Shelter slash concession, and the $40 soccer field for a total of $93.44 for the August 7th Night to Unite.
I'll second their motion.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
As a club, we've determined who is going to chair this, and I'm one of the chairs, and so realized that in order to get this request in, for waiving of the fees, it had to come in as a new item, so I appreciate the council allowing me to put that in as a new item, but since the 2009, the Lions have, Northern Lions have sponsored the annual Public Safety Night to Unite at Northern Memorial Park, this year's event will be Tuesday, August 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we again are asking for a total waiving of fees of $93.44.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I don't have it in front of me, I was looking for it, but I can't find it, I, I know we had this long discussion about organizations when we were talking fees, I'm just trying to remember if it was, in the old fee schedule that talked about May, I'm just trying to remember what it specifically, if it, if it, if it was waived or not, or still needed permission in the new fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
When we adopted the most current fee schedule, the discussion we had was in regards to the City Hall building, not anything additional to that, so, it may be if we look at that fee schedule again, we could incorporate that piece into it, but at this time, our fee schedule only waives the fee for this structure.
Other discussions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor.
Chamber article.
The chamber article, I brought this forward, we just received this, we received it yesterday from Cory, and the chamber article is due by August 1st, so we couldn't wait till the next meeting, so, if there are no objections, I would move that, I would prepare the articles, submit it to the council for review, and then submit it to the chamber, and if any councilmembers have any suggestions, to email them through the office, then they can be emailed to me.
And it's due by August 15th?
The, no, it's August 1st, so I would ask that, any comments to me?
Articles, pictures, and updates by August 15th on this one.
Bless you. I need the article and word, and any pictures to me by the 1st of August, the article will appear in the chamber newsletter on the 15th, was that different than? I will clarify, because that's different than what Cory sent out to me. Either way.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, now, I'll second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I guess questioning, councilman Rainville, do you have any thoughts on a topic yet, or are you looking for suggestions?
To, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To councilmember Rickert, I'm looking for suggestions.
Do we want to, I, I don't know if this is appropriate place or not, but do we want to put anything in, in, right, anything in there about how we've kind of started redoing our road improvement plans, and how the city is now investing or trying to invest, so it's not a 100% burden on the residents, I don't know, it's just a?
That's a very good suggestion.
It might be. Certainly appropriate for our town newsletter. I don't know, I should have mentioned that later, huh?
We talked about it today, it's right during the election.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, I think this article should be more like kind of what was entered, what would attract people to come to the city.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I think in the past, what we've done is looked at last year's version, updated it to whatever new amenities, whatever, what were the other, the, the, I think it was the number of firefighters, you know, things like that, more just general, but I'll, I'll pull that out, I remember who.
Last year's was perfect.
But I would ask.
I do think, in honor of this, this being the council meeting closest to our first council meeting 10 years ago, happy birthday to us, that we should do something on Northern 10 years in, you know, where we were 10 years ago, where we are today.
Would that be ugly?
Well, let's stick with the good.
I might take a copy of that. And then I would just ask if, if councilmembers could have their suggestions into the office, and that they can be to me by the 30th of July, and that, or actually, if we could go 25th of July, in case it has to be the 1st.
Maybe to make sure we make it 15th.
Maybe, that's it.
What was that date?
July 25th.
All right, we have a motion to second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. We do a jury.